Order, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to everyone for joining us this evening. Trustee Hamilton sends her regrets. We'll get started by approving our agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda as presented? Is our motion on page two, please?
President Vannen, incorporate my movement. We approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye. Aye, opposed. The motion passes and we'll get started with the superintendent's report. Mark?
Thank you, Randy. We have a number of items that are going to cover this evening. And the first of those is a little recognition for a program that I know some of the board members have seen and was brought to this board probably a few years ago, a couple of years ago, anyway. But Tom Home is here from Bike Friendly Kalamazoo to give us a little recognition for a program that we have here called All Kids Bike. So, Tom, welcome you up to the podium if you would.
Well, thank you to the Board of Portage Public Schools and Superintendent Mark Belang. Thank you. And I just want to mention that Professor Juno is here. He's one of our board members. And Deb Carpenter is here as well. There's Deb. And Deb tells me that she worked with Jeremy Zantz on a number of the bike rodeos down here in Portage. So, thanks again to the Board. And again, I'm Tom Home with Bike Friendly Kalamazoo. And we appreciate the opportunity to work with Jeremy on the All Kids Bike project. So Jeremy is our liaison for the project. And he's been an excellent advocate and a partner for us. He's partnered or participated in numerous of our bike programs during committee meetings. And he helped to expand the All Kids Bike project. So a little bit about All Kids Bike. This is a learn-to-ride kindergarten PE project that is nationally tested and is supported by the Strider Education Foundation. So the program is a partnership between Portage Public Schools and Bike Friendly Kalamazoo. And we support Portage in the effort to bring the program to additional elementary schools. So currently Jeremy Zantz has the project in several Portage elementary schools, I think four, and maybe some sharing with some additional schools as well. So a little bit about the program. So the program delivers 24 balance bikes and one teacher instructor bike along with pedal conversion kits, helmets, and two storage racks for the bikes. The program gives the PE teacher bike training program with five lessons in balance mode and three lessons in pedal mode. The kindergartners learn to balance and steer the bikes and then pedal the bikes. So you can imagine 25 or 30 kids on bikes in the gym steering, and these are Strider bikes, and learning that balance. So we believe that this program is so valuable to develop individuals' lifelong habits of physical exercise. The project touches on the three primary goals of BFK, which are centered on bike safety, bike education, and bike ridership. Again, safety, education, and ridership. So as a result of the community interest and support, Portage and our greater Kalamazoo region is adding bike facilities to help us get around. So a lot of new bike lanes out there. And now that we have the challenge, now we have that challenge to make sure that we are using these new facilities, these new bike lanes safely to get around our communities. So again, thank you Jeremy Zantz, and thank you to Portage Public Schools for working with us on the All Kids Bike project. So I think maybe we can get a photo with Jeremy and this award. And again, it's for Portage Public Schools with Jeremy being our key liaison. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy, any comments for you on how the program is?
I would love to share. So this past Friday, our PE teacher, Tom Laskeritas, had to be out. And he knew that this was coming. So he had me come into his class the previous Friday and taught me how to work with the kindergarten students using these bikes. And so I was the substitute teacher this past Friday for 22 happy five-year-olds. And so we participated and all students learned how to put on their helmets. They were able to use the kickstand, balance on the bike, and then we proceeded to play games in the gym. And the smiles on their faces, it says it all. So we are extremely grateful for this opportunity to bring this lifelong activity to our students. And they love it. So if you want to check out our Facebook page and different pictures through Portage Public Schools, they've shared multiple times the great smiles of our friends that are riding Strider bikes, so.
Do you know offhand which schools have that now?
So it's Haverhill, Woodland, Central L, and Amberly. And so currently with the All Kids Bike, when you receive that grant or donation, you receive a bike stands for all the bikes. But our Portage Public Schools is the one that built our current ones that we currently have that we will in and out. So right now it's just for kindergarten and young fives. We do it every Friday. So if anyone would like to witness in that joy, you're welcome to come and visit.
You were asked a question by, I know when board members are touring your building, you were asked a question of how many students of that age have had previous experience on a bike? And what did you share?
Again, it was just raw, him having students raise their hands. But about 75% of them had never learned to ride a bike, of our kindergarten students and young fives. So about 75% had never been on a two-wheeled bike before. So they're still very excited.
So Jeremy, when we were at your building last Friday, there was a lot of cool stuff that we saw. But this, to me, was the coolest thing ever, to see those bikes there and all ready for the kids to go, the helmets lined up on the stage, how excited you were about it. I even took a picture of the bikes to take home and show my husband, who is an avid biker. But it's amazing. There are so many kids who live in situations that would not allow them to have a bike or ride a bike. So to learn how to do that in something that's a lifelong skill is really, really cool.
Yeah, my staff took turns walking by the gym because I had my helmet on. And I was on the adult-sized Strider bike, but I'm still a large man. And a large man on a little BMX-style bicycle is funny to look at.
I thought maybe you had to ride one of those little ones. That would be even nicer.
I love that this includes the balance bikes. Having two of my kids learn on pedal bikes and then comparing that experience to the two who learned on the balance bikes, it is such an improvement to learn on the balance bikes. It makes it so much faster and more enjoyable and less fear-filled for the students that they're going to fall because they know that their feet can just go down if they need to. And then they go right back up and they're off again. And it removes so much of that fear. So I am thrilled that this involves balance bikes, which for so many families are too expensive to try.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for joining us this evening and for the recognition. And thank you, Jeremy, and the other principal staff members who are incorporating us. Appreciate this very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And we're working to add the program to additional schools all around the whole region, Portage, Kalamazoo, and other school districts as well. So thank you again.
All right, our next report. Dr. Pascoe, are you in the introduction here? Or should I just ask Heather to come up? Heather's been up here a number of times, but proposed a student trip by our students to Puerto Rico, so.
Hello, good evening. Heather Caninga is from Portage Northern High School. I did want to take a minute and thank you for approving the trip that we did this past summer to Spain. We had seven students that were able to go and do a 10-day trip. And it was a lot smaller of a group than what we're used to having, but it really was a great experience. And to see the kids really grow, we had ninth through 12th graders that went. So it was a great experience. This time we are looking to go to Costa Rica, actually, in 2026, planning for until 2026 so that the students have more time to earn that money, to save the money and be able to afford the trip. One of the things that we're finding as post-COVID is that our numbers have been down a little bit. And so just really trying to make it possible for more students to be able to go by having more of a plan with that. So it'd be a 10-day trip going around Costa Rica. We're hoping that we would have about 18 students so that three teachers will be able to go with us, so. Maybe more if there's that interest.
And your trip was World Strides, which you use many times.
Yes. And that's one that many through the district have been using lately.
Well, thank you, Heather, for continuing to make this opportunity available for our students. We appreciate it.
Yes, it's really a great experience. And to be able to see the students, be able to use the language, and, you know, to apply what they've been doing in class. And it's just a great experience to watch and observe them.
I tell you, one of my best experiences in a trip was when I went to Costa Rica. And I was on an outbound course. We would hike from Puerto Limón across the Arde de la Muerte over to Capos. And it was such phenomenal and such a welcoming country. So I'm so excited y'all are going.
Yes, it's definitely a great experience for the students.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we'll move to our bond project update. Johnny Edwards is here with Anastasia to give us the change order summary.
Thank you Superintendent Belang, as well as members of the board of education. Just want to switch it up a little bit. Last time I think I showed us pictures related to summer projects. Now I just want to provide the board with some visual images of the construction projects of both Central L and Haverhill. Starting with Central Elementary School, you can see at the upper portion of the building, the blue brick glazing is starting to be installed there. You may just see a few pops of different colors along that. That's intentional. It's an elementary school, so we wanted to have a little playfulness into the design as well since they are younger students. That blue brick kind of matches the theme of both Central Middle and Central High School. On the inside of the building, this is on the second level. And just across the picture, you'll see some openings for windows. We're trying to take advantage of much natural light as possible. And this picture is facing more the south side of the school. Here's just another area within the school. This shows framing, which I believe is the second floor. And now we've begun some drywalling at Central Elementary School, mostly on the first floor. The rooms really start to take shape once the drywall is starting to be installed. And just switching over to Haverhill, as the board may recall, Haverhill's schedule is delayed. Not delayed, it's offset by roughly 45 days. Now it's intentional. So framing is virtually complete on both floors. And they've now begun some drywall, but in smaller areas, not as much as Central Middle School. This is the exterior picture of the exterior of Haverhill. This is on the north side of the school. You can see the brick top to bottom. In that middle area where you see the plastic, that will be an exit area. And so that is a different color for students for wayfinding. This is a picture on the inside of the school. On the left side, you'll see a stairway that's coming down into the cafeteria. That would be another way for students to enter the cafeteria for those on the second level. On the right side, you'll see what we call a gathering stair. This is a running joke that I have with Mr. Zantz, that every day a student or something must be going on there. But this is where the school can have larger gatherings. Not pictured here, but across from this gathering stair is a, will be a screen so they can make a projection, show videos or clips to all the students. This should hold well over 100-plus students there on that gathering stair. This gathering stair is also located in the heart of the school. And students will see this each morning as they arrive. There's another picture of the framing that's taking place. And another picture of the exterior. Both of these pictures will be the forward entrance or the front entrance with the canopy to the right side. Right now, that area where you see the green canopy, there'll be some metal panels installed there at a later time. So those are the visual images for my presentation. And then just wanted to say a couple words about Woodland. Our community gallery walk for the new Woodland is scheduled for tomorrow, October 15th at 5:00 p.m. The parents and students have been notified of that. We also sent out a mailing to about 200 to 300 residents within the Woodland area that may not be connected with having a student in the school, but we invite them to come as well. After school tomorrow around 4:00, we'll do a private unveiling for the staff to be able to see it. But light snacks will be provided at the gallery walk. Also for Woodland Elementary School, we've held our second of two construction documents review meetings. Our next and final one is next Friday. When we come back to the board in November, we'll provide a more detailed unveiling of Woodland's design, which would mirror what will be shown tomorrow at the community gallery walk. Then also later in the agenda, I'll bring a recommendation for the demolition of both Central L and Woodland. So I'll be happy to answer any questions before we talk about change orders.
Johnny, with the good weather, everything on schedule?
Everything is on schedule. We're hoping, our plan is that both buildings will be fully enclosed by the winter. And so most of the hard work will not be seen from the outside by the time the weather comes around.
Yes.
So we're just knowing they'll still be working there. And we've been really pleased with our contractors in terms of their time, starting as early as possible at 7:00 a.m. and working throughout the day.
Just to add a little bit to that, we have started the windows over at Central. So they are starting to get that enclosed. And then we also put up temporary enclosures to keep the space heated for the drywall and whatnot, so.
Well, it sure was fun to tour Central and Haverhill the last couple weeks and just to see how all the input from parents, students, and teachers ended up creating these buildings. And they're really something to see. They're going to be great.
Yeah, we really appreciate all the input. As the community, for those who may not know, both schools have a lot of similarities or parity within their designs, but they all have their own unique features that mimics and replicates what the culture is within their respective schools. And so just that example of the gathering stair at Haverhill was larger than the gathering stair at Central L, but that was intentional based on the school's needs as well. But they both have a gathering stair. Sizes are a little different. There are some things a little larger at one school, a little smaller at the other. But I think once the buildings are finalized, our staff, students, and community members will be very proud of it.
I hope you have a good turnout at Woodland tomorrow night.
Yes, the gallery walks that held for the first two schools were really cool, particularly the neighbors who do not have children associated with the school. And their memories and stories of Woodland, of the current Woodland, is always great to hear. So we're looking forward to that tomorrow. So I'll turn it over to Anastasia for our change order summary.
Thank you, Johnny. Good evening, everyone. We'll get started on your cover sheet here. Just a quick reminder, I know you guys have seen this a few times now, but you will see the dollars moving from the current contingency line up to that top portion for the current construction costs. So as we keep moving forward, those dollars will shift upwards. Moving to the second sheet, we'll start with Central Elementary. Item one was Bulletin Nine, that included revisions to the site utilities, the demo plan for the current building, and updates to storefront framing and security glass. The total cost for that was $67,360 and affected six contractors. Item two was Bulletin Ten, masonry updates to remove a water repellent sealer, interior revisions to countertops, and then there was some miscellaneous mechanical and electrical updates. That one was a deduct of $24,309 and affected nine contractors. Item three included relocated Consumers Energy power pole and the Portage Public Schools switch. Updates were required per Consumers Energy. That one had a cost of $169,695,000 and affected two contractors. And a quick reminder on that one, that was one of the items that we did approval on one of the last times I was here. Item four was updated security glazing at the library slider. That was $2,885 and affected one contractor. Item five was revisions to brick structural support system. We had to add metal plate required for the pharaoh brackets which hold up the second-story brick on the metal studs. And that was a cost of $5,694 and affected one contractor. Item six, we added a through-wall scupper with a collection box, downspout, and knee wall to assist with overflow drainage on the roof. That had a cost of $4,397 and affected two contractors. Item seven, we used an allowance for of $28,953 that included moving some scope from the casework over into general trades. So that one had a $0 cost for contingency, and that affected one contractor. Item eight was some additional framing required at the existing school's office due to some asbestos glue pods that had to be removed. That was $2,970 and affected one contractor. Last item nine was revisions to roof drain locations to provide a positive pitch for drain flow with a cost of $5,228 and affected two contractors. Moving on to Haverhill, item one was pier conflicts. There was a coordination and move, we had to move ductwork to avoid piers in the masonry walls. That had a cost of $9,462 and affected one contractor. Item two, we also used an allowance for this one of $2,277. And we had to add some stone for a small temp drive when we relocated our construction entrance during work at the Coulter and Marlow intersection. That one affected one contractor. Item three was Bulletin Seven. This included revisions to plumbing fixtures to comply with an updated code compliance, ductwork, and structural pier clarifications. This was, there was a requirement now for drinking fountains to comply with certain filters. That had a cost of $6,452 and affected two contractors. Item four was asphalt removal and rework of gravel base at the Coulter and Manhattan intersection to meet some City of Portage paving requirements. That was a cost of $8,433 and affected two contractors. Item five was Bulletin Eight. There was some updates to the chiller condenser units to comply with federal refrigerant updates. That had a cost of $13,692 and affected two contractors. Item six was adding some masonry block to the west and north walls to allow proper flashing in detail to occur due to roof insulation thickness. That had a cost of $4,862 and affected one contractor. Item seven, we added some more masonry block and brick to enclose a structural beam. This was a coordination piece between structural and architectural at a cost of $2,633 and affected one contractor. Item eight, there was some updates to the structural design during shop drawing review. And that was $10,666 and affected one contractor. Item nine was revisions to roof drain locations to provide a positive pitch for drain flow with a cost of $4,284 and affected two contractors. Item 10, we added some girts and sheathing to align the metal wall panels to be flush in the wall. That was $3,742 and affected one contractor. Item 11, we had to grind back some beams, ensuring that the surface was flush for the burnished block walls into the library and heart for a cost of $4,536, and that affected one contractor. Last item 12 was steel supports required for duct cutout in the precast. That was a cost of $4,508 and affected one contractor. For a total cost at Haverhill of $73,270 from contingency.
That concludes our portion of the report. Would be happy to ask you any questions you have about the summary that Anastasia has outlined for the board.
Well, just a comment, that surprise from Consumers Energy, that was 70% of the summary, you know, five for the central change orders, so nothing you can do about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item under this portion of the agenda is a couple of updates as to what's been happening in Lansing. Paul will present some budget-related items that will eventually have some impact on budget amendments that we bring to the board. But there are a lot of unknowns at the time. We passed the 24-25 budget. There's still a lot of unknowns, but we have some progress in making some changes. So Paul's going to review those with you.
I would just like to put the disclaimer out there that I'm not a legislator. So if I don't get everything, I have everything absolutely perfect. I want to apologize in advance. But I have been following a lot of these items. So I feel pretty comfortable informing the board tonight. And Mark has some additional information that he will add, and I think possibly when I'm done. If you recall back to June 24th, seems like a long time ago, came to the board at that time, Sammy and I did, to present the preliminary budget. And we planned for a $215 increase in the per pupil foundation funding. Lawmakers had made a final decision at that time. We adopted our preliminary budget that night. On Wednesday of that week, two days later, they met for an all-nighter session. So they went early into the morning hours of the 27th, and they passed a state aid package. And it had some very interesting items in it, to say the least. It was not boring by any way, shape, or form. We did not receive a per pupil foundation increase. So there's been no increase to the foundation allowance. We remain currently, right now, at the $9,608 per pupil. But what we did actually receive is something similar to a rebate. And I will explain to you further that the rebate comes into play from a reduction in our overall retirement rate that we pay on every dollar of wages that we pay to employees in the district. So they determined through negotiation, or budget negotiation process, that our OPEB portion, the portion that covers the healthcare piece of retirement, was fully funded. So we didn't need to pay in as much in the retirement rate towards that piece. So that came about, and it passed through the House just fine. But what didn't happen was it didn't get all the way through the Senate to make it a permanent reduction. So what we actually ended up with, that massive legislation session, is a categorical called 147A4. There's so many different categoricals, I can't keep track of them all now. And it equates to approximately 4%. The governor advertised, you know, through her emails and commercials and everything, that it was approximately a 4% increase. But what I really don't know yet to be certain of is I've seen three different. is I've seen three different, three different agencies, and I'm not seeing our state aid status report for October yet, and we are not going to actually receive this categorical until probably November or December because I reached out to MDE, and ORS has not communicated information back to MDE to start the payments. But it's kind of, it's going to be based on the actual employee makeup that we have at the district. So there's lots of different retirement option plans based on when you entered the system. So it's not going to be a flat, easy number to say, this is what we're going to get. It's going to actually be made up of who comprises our employee status of the retirement system. So I'm very anxious to see what that's going to look like overall, but we'll be putting that into the budget amendment that we bring to the board in February because I will know it by then. But I view it similar to a rebate. We still have to pay in that rate overall for the year because they couldn't make that retirement reduction permanent because the Senate adjourned before they could get it all the way through in June. So we're still paying that additional percentage. It's a little over five percent that we're going to have for the rebate, but they're giving it back to us in a revenue categorical that we don't have to turn around and pay back to ORS, so we get to keep it. If you also recall, if anybody can remember back in the year two thousand and twelve, there was a big retirement reform that happened in two thousand and twelve, and employees at that time, to be guaranteed health insurance at the time that you wanted to retire through ORS, you had to elect the required healthcare contribution option, which was three percent of your wages. Well, since that healthcare portion of the retirement rate is fully funded, the House and the Senate said, let's give this money back to the employees that are having this withheld. So currently, it's based on last year's wages. I have a feeling they're going to try to work through some cleanup. Currently, it's based on twenty-three, twenty-four wages to be reimbursed. But those payments will start as soon as we have received the money through MDE, and I checked on the status of that as well. And I have a feeling it's going to be November, December, probably closer to December if they try to do cleanup language before we're going to see that money. But we'll be reimbursing employees that actually have that three percent withheld from their paychecks back to them. But it will permanently sunset, and I'll touch on that a little bit later in my update to you. And you probably also heard a lot about the school, the mental health support and school safety piece of the budget, the thirty-one AA funding. In June, that funding was slashed by about ninety-two percent. It went from about two hundred and fourteen dollars a pupil to about seventeen dollars a pupil. So there was a huge reduction there. And there was, there was a lot of talk about that and everything. So that's what passed that night, but I'll touch a little bit further on what has happened to it most recently. Also, free breakfast and lunch is going to continue for our students, so that's huge. So after that night-long session that they had, the legislators, you know, ended for the summer so they could go do campaigning, but they came back into session in early September. And they passed, the Senate passed Senate Bill nine eleven, which is the bill that we were hoping that they would have passed back in June to make this retirement reduction rate permanent. So what they have done is they have now made that reduction for the healthcare piece of the retirement percentage permanent, and that will take place October one of two thousand twenty-five, so the state's next fiscal year. So we will see that permanent rate reduction, and the employees that had elected for the required healthcare contribution will actually see that and stop being withheld from their paycheck. So not everything could be taken care of at one time back in June, so they had some cleanup catch-up to do when they came back into session. But then they kept working harder, and on September twenty-fifth, they passed House Bill fifty-five oh three, which was an additional school aid supplemental bill, and that was to restore funding an additional one hundred and twenty-five million to that safety and security piece, so that thirty-one AA funding. It's going to increase allocation to about a hundred dollars per pupil, so it's going to end up being about half of what it was last year, a little bit less than half. But how, one caveat, the House passed it right away with immediate effect, but the Senate did not pass it with immediate effect. So what that means is we have to wait ninety days after, you know, they convene, and then funding will be available. So we're probably looking at March before we see funding for that. The governor did sign that bill last week on the tenth. So those are the major items that relate to the budget that I wanted to touch on tonight. I think Mark has a few other items to add, but I also wanted to give the board a quick update that I will provide you with a September report, financial report for the board at the end of this week. We changed the timings of our meetings in October, and I usually would have presented one to you the second week in October since this is our only meeting in October. We're close to having the books totally closed for September, but I'm going to email you something this week with some of the items that I noticed in that report. So, Mark, anything else you would like to add?
Well, it's, in addition to the, you know, the financial pieces, the major ones that Paula touched on, there were nearly, between the House and the Senate, there were nearly a hundred bills introduced, and they're at some level of being addressed, either through committee or waiting for governor's signature and so forth. But topics dealing with school safety, there are multiple ones, and there's a lot of overlap between some of these on the House side and the Senate side. Drinking water, attendance requirements for kindergartners, dyslexia screening, the staffing of school libraries, immunizations, school counselors. So there's just a lot of activity happening in Lansing right now. I don't know how much of this will actually happen while this particular legislature is in session. Some of them have cost implications. Others have some curricular implications. So a lot of stuff that we're watching, and as it comes along, we'll be able to make some decisions as to what that local impact is on us. In the meantime, we're fielding a lot of questions, especially Paula's department is, on when are some of these things going to happen? And, you know, we give it our best guess, but we're very careful that we're not making promises that we have no control over. So just a very active time, both now and then in lame duck, when lame duck comes around after elections, so.
Any other questions?
So despite the uncertainty on some of these big picture, our cash flow is fine. We're fine.
Thank you, Paula.
Thanks, Paula.
The last thing, I just want to mention, really, this is more of a shout-out for our staff and others at Curious Kids. We have a new director, Lindsay French just took over, and certainly her first months on the job have not been uneventful. She's had several issues to deal with. Most recently, last week, we had a young student there who had experienced a medical emergency, and a serious medical emergency. And Lindsay's training and first aid was really helpful. We had help from our friends, her neighbors there in Community High School that came over and helped. Our school resource officers all came over. Everyone was there before the EMS actually arrived, which took a little longer than we felt comfortable with, but they were able to take over once, you know, once they got there. And the young man is in good condition, but experienced, again, a medical situation that we were not familiar that he had, and neither was his family. So kudos to the staff there for their quick response and really being on top of that situation very quickly, so. Training pays off. So that's it under the superintendent's report. Any questions that are left remaining?
Thank you.
Should we move into the board education piece?
I believe we should.
Tracy, are you spearheading this? So Tracy, Speaker Gershimer is taking the lead on this. She's our Director of Systems and nine-twelve curriculum, and we have this required report that we're providing to you this evening.
I have some team members with me here. So the Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee contains clergy members, parents, educators, and health professionals. This group is required to evaluate, measure, and report on the attainment of program growth and objectives every two years. So tonight, we have two of our Human Growth Development Chairs who will present this report, which I believe you have a copy of. It is my pleasure to introduce Anne Schnurstein. She's our middle school team leader and Emily Anthony, our high school team leader.
Hi there, I'm Annie Schnurstein, and I teach Healthy Living at West Middle School.
And I'm Emily Anthony, and I teach Family and Consumer Science courses at Portage Northern High School.
And so just a few things to highlight from our Human Growth and Development to your report. We haven't presented this for a while, for a couple of reasons. Of course, COVID happened, and that was a disruption for us for several years. And then there's been some changes in the curriculum and instruction department. And so we have not presented the report in a while, if you were wondering. And just a few things to highlight from the report. We teach Human Growth and Development in this district in fifth grade, sixth grade, and eighth grade. Prevention Works comes in and does some Human Growth and Development lessons for our eighth-grade students. And then in high school, it's through the health classes, so which are typically...
Typically freshmen.
Typically freshmen. In the report, you can see the learning objectives for all of the grade levels, for everything that is taught for Human Growth and Development.
That hasn't changed.
No. All of that is the same. And there's a little bit of data so you can see how many students this past year were in the classes where Human Growth and Development was taught at each of our school buildings. We also included Mi-Fi data, which is Michigan Profile for Healthy Youth. We take, our students take this survey every other year at the seventh-grade level, the ninth-grade level, and the eleventh-grade level, so we included a little bit of that data. We also had Angela Blood, who is our regional health coordinator, come in and meet with our team of teachers at the beginning of this school year so to go over some of the Mi-Fi data with us because we like to use it as a little bit of a needs assessment for what areas we really should be focusing on in our classrooms. So as far as next steps go, we've done a lot of work over the last several years. So Emily and myself, and then our elementary Human Growth and Development Coordinator as well. So we have some things that we've been working on that we actually will be asking approval for in November, right, at one of the meetings in November. So we'll be back. So there's a few other things. We also met with someone from the Kalamazoo County Health Department this fall at the beginning of the school year who went over some sexually transmitted diseases data for our area, which was eye-opening for us to see within our, you know, our county. We also created a scope and sequence that's very detailed, and that's been, that's been stolen now for a while, but there's some things that we've added to it. So when we come back in November, we'll be presenting that information to you as well.
It's very nice, it's visual, so instead of having a bunch of words and lessons down, instead it's a visual document kind of showing us each grade level.
Including opt-out information for any of, for any of the grade levels for parents that want to opt their child out of instruction. I think that's it. Do you have any questions?
Could you just explain how the Mi-Fi data is acquired?
Yes, so each school decides what class they're going to give the survey in. So it just has to be a class that every, so for instance, in seventh grade, I think at West, we gave it in maybe one of our social studies classes last year. But, so every school decides where they're going to give the survey. And then the data comes back, and it actually goes through Marty Witt. She gets all of the information, and then she shares it with us. And then our regional health coordinator goes over that data with us, and it's all done via computer, the survey is.
Okay. Thank you.
In order for students to do that survey, they also, there's a letter that goes home telling the parents what we're doing. So if a parent would like to have their child opted out of that, they can do that as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to our comments and communications section. Is there anyone signed up to address the board this evening?
Portage Public Schools Board of Education, public comment at board meetings. Board of Education meetings are held for the purpose of conducting the business of the school district. The board recognizes the importance of letting the public express themselves on district matters and welcomes community input at our board meetings. To permit fair and orderly public expression, please conform to these guidelines when addressing the board. Attendees must register their intention to speak during the public participation portion of the meeting by completing the speaker registration form at the beginning of the meeting. Individuals may not register others to speak. Speakers will be recognized by the presiding officer and may not be called in the order in which they have signed up to speak. Speakers are requested to state their name, address, and group affiliation if applicable. Limit comments to three minutes. Direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Speakers may not yield any of their speaking time to others. Provide a written copy of your comments and supporting documentation to the board secretary if available. Present your comments in a respectful and courteous manner to model the behavior expected of Portage students. Refrain from mentioning any student or individual by name. Contact the superintendent directly regarding personnel matters. The board has a legal obligation to protect the due process rights of students and employees. Typically, concerns raised by speakers during public comment are best addressed through the established chain of command. Board policy delegates resolution of operational concerns to the superintendent for further action.
Thank you, Terry. Welcome our first speaker tonight, Cat Frank.
Hi, everyone. Cat Frank, Portage Education Association President. I'm honored to share some incredible highlights from our district that truly showcase the spirit of our schools and the remarkable staff and students that we have. Recently, our third to fifth graders at Lake Center enjoyed a delightful field trip to the theater to see The Wild Robot, which I believe is a book that they were reading. This experience not only reinforced the lessons from their reading curriculum, but also fostered a love for literature and the arts that will resonate with them for years to come. At Porter Central High, we are thrilled to highlight the remarkable efforts of teachers Madison Losi and Irene Mayfield, who revived our debate team after a decade-long hiatus. Their dedication has sparked the interest of around forty students. And last month, every team that competed in their first event, where they participated for the first time, not only excelled, but won at least one round. And they also had several students place first and second in various events, too. This is a testament to their hard work and the resilience of our students and staff, and thanks to Madison and Irene for starting that club again. And let's not forget everyday acts of kindness that define our school cultures. Today, at Portage Northern High, a teacher shared a beautiful moment of compassion with me. A student accidentally spilled their lunch, and in the teacher's words, it was a true taco salad catastrophe avocado everywhere. This was just outside of her classroom. And without hesitation, one of her students in her class, who didn't know this kid in the hallway, jumped up, helped clean that kid up, ran and grabbed a sweatshirt that she had, an extra sweatshirt for that child to change into, and then went in her pocket and gave that kid money that she had in her pocket so that student could buy lunch again. This kind of empathy and support is what makes our community so special. Together, we're not just educating students, we're nurturing kind, compassionate leaders for tomorrow. And I want to thank all of our educators for everything that we do every day, and for you all for your continued support. and for you all for your continued support in making our schools a place where every student can thrive. Thanks.
Thank you, Kat. Thanks for coming to our meeting this evening. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Our next speaker is Lindsay Zerber. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Zerber and I'm here tonight to talk about The Breadwinner. Several weeks ago, my 10-year-old son came home saying that he was reading an inappropriate book in class. He began to disclose a scene from the book in which prisoners were taken to a soccer stadium and had their hands cut off with a sword as, quote, "blood flew in every direction." And a Taliban soldier stood laughing, holding a rope strung with four severed hands like beads on a necklace. I began researching the book and was horrified to find that this was not the worst of the violent content it contained. I requested he immediately be removed from reading it and reached out to the principal to set up a meeting. On September 25th, I met with the principal and the director of curriculum. In this meeting, I asked why this book was provided as education material to 10-year-olds when the movie adaptation is rated PG-13 and the mature content was not disclosed to parents. They responded that they strive to be transparent and referred me to a parent letter that went home. I've included this letter for you. The letter said nothing of the graphic violent content and stated the book contained themes of war and oppression. How is this transparent? I was told the violence wasn't the focus and really wasn't that bad as the curriculum director pointed out a few sentences at the bottom of a page that said, "I left my mother and my father and my brother in the street for the dogs to eat." She failed to disclose the following paragraph a little further up the page. "The Taliban came to my house. They grabbed my father and my brother and took them outside. They shot them right in the street. My mother started hitting them and they shot her, too. I ran back inside and hid in a closet. I thought they would kill me, too, but they were finished killing people at my house. They were busy killing at other houses. I finally left my closet and went downstairs. There were bodies all over the street. I was so scared they would come back for me. There were bodies everywhere. The wild dogs had started to eat the bodies, so there were pieces of people on the sidewalk and in the streets. I even saw a dog carrying a person's arm in its mouth." As a teacher who has previously taught in an elementary school, I was disgusted that this was not only given to our 10-year-olds, but that the content was hidden from parents. In the June 19th, 2023 board meeting, the curriculum director stated that "any unit that had a controversial topic has a statement to the family that is very clear, that we are wanting to be as transparent as possible. There is nothing hidden in this." Yet, when I reached out to other parents, none of them were aware of the intense violence contained in this book. At this age level, there may be elements of fighting or even death contained in books. However, there's a distinct difference between fighting and carnage, death and dismemberment. Gore has no place in children's literature. Schools block violent images and videos from being accessed by students on their servers, but then teach from text with the same content and call this appropriate. It is your duty to provide a free and appropriate education for all students. When did teaching our children about torture, murder, and beheadings become appropriate? As the vote draws near and we look to fill four of your chairs, we ask you to honor the community who placed you here by standing up for our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lindsay. Do we have a copy of your comments?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Bethany Mutzger. Welcome.
I'm Bethany Mutzger and I'm here today to voice concerns about the book, The Breadwinner, and about the Fish Tank curriculum as a whole. This particular book was placed in the hands of 10-year-old children, which is not only developmentally inappropriate, but also dangerous and damaging. This book is full of depression and scenes of grisly dismemberment, among other things. Depictions of this type of gory bloodshed have lasting impact on the children that read them, including a desensitization to more violence and a decreased empathy, which according to your own curriculum director and director of education is quite the opposite of the objective that they were aiming for with this book. Also, research has shown that children can in fact be traumatized by literature. According to psychologist Elizabeth Reteef, quote, "Any experience that is overwhelming and that challenges the fundamental worldview can be traumatizing." Anything that is just too much to take in as it happens and that shows you the world is not what you thought it was. The rules are not what you thought they were and you are not safe. And there's squat you can do about it can be traumatizing. Fiction can easily expose kids to concepts and scenarios that nothing in their daily lives have prepared them for. They don't yet have the mental or neurological maturity required to easily compartmentalize. So the border between fiction and what could be is particularly fuzzy. So yes, children can be traumatized by fiction if the fiction exposes them to something that overwhelms them, particularly with fear and/or horror. And that reveals the world to them as a dark and unpredictable place in which they are powerless," end quote. The Breadwinner does exactly that. This book is traumatizing these young children. This is a book that you, as the school board, have chosen to place in the hands of these 10-year-olds, causing many of them lasting mental damage and distress. You did this by voting to adopt the Fish Tank curriculum without doing your own verification on whether the material included was appropriate for the developmental level of the children being taught. This is just one book among hundreds being taught to the students of whom you, as a board, are here charged to ensure the proper and appropriate education of. My hope is that in the reviewing of this book, you will also evaluate the Fish Tank curriculum as a whole and try to find a more suitable ELA curriculum, one that helps the children to grow into kind and caring individuals and does so without traumatizing them in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Bethany. Do we have a copy of your comments?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marilyn Williams, please.
Hello, I'm Marilyn Williams. I'm a City of Portage resident and I have two children who graduated from Portage schools in 2012 and 2014. I am here to again address the book, Breadwinner. Breadwinner, as has been spoken, has been deemed appropriate for 10-year-olds. My question is, or the question has been asked in a 2023 board meeting, what criteria are applied to determine the appropriateness of a book? And the curriculum director's response was that all of these topics are already things that happen in the classroom. We hear students talking about it and it is part of what we do now. As a mother of a teacher, I know that if a student in the classroom starts talking about murder or torture, they're required to report that. If children were talking about that in one of your classrooms, I would expect parents would receive notification of that. So why is it okay for students to read about this in their literature for 10-year-olds? I have read the book. I, it was a well-written book. But I don't believe it's appropriate for 10-year-olds, as Bethany recommended. I have found four general guidelines to determine whether a book is acceptable for use in a classroom. They are: if a student can't stay in a hallway, they shouldn't be read in the classroom. Would the teacher be comfortable reading it to the general public? Does it represent the most noble and inspiring literature students can read? And is the only book, is this book the only one that can reach the objective of the class? I would have to say, after reading The Breadwinner, my answer is no. And it's not the children's system, it's not the school system's place to introduce such topics as murder and torture to a child, particularly at that age. A 2023 Chalk Beat Detroit article stated that "the Board of Education for the State of Michigan supports parents' rights to decide which books are appropriate for children." Similarly, parents' fundamental rights to direct the upbringing and education of their children have been repeatedly recognized and protected by the U.S. Supreme Court, as well as our Michigan State Courts. A federal court has been, has said it is not educators, but parents who have the primary rights in upbringing their children. Yet, when a parent learns from a child that such a topic is being taught to their children, it makes me feel like those rights are being usurped by the student, by the teachers and by the school. I, as a parent and a grandparent, or as a grandparent, I want to be able to discuss those things with my children before they're being placed in front of their, in front of their eyes, before they're hearing those things. I'll give you an example of two students who read the book in the classroom. One student, she told her father, her mother, when she got home that they read something in the classroom that was scary. Her mother asked, "Well, did the teacher discuss this in front of the class?" And the child said, "The room was completely silent." And she would have been embarrassed to talk about it with her teacher. Now, the curriculum director instructed a parent when discussing these issues that teachers have been trained in how to have discussions about such matters. Unfortunately, that didn't happen in this child's classroom. And I don't know if that was true throughout the class, but this child was affected reading. Talk with another parent whose child read this book. The child had repeated nightmares after it. These are just a few examples of the negative ramifications of this book that I understand is under review. I would encourage the review to be completed and that this book be removed because it is just not appropriate for 10-year-old children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have your comments?
Oh, I'll give you my notes. Is that okay?
Yes.
It's in?
It's in the one that Lindsay candided.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's verified.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Sandy Scott. Welcome.
Hey. My name is Sandy. I'm old. I'm 67 years old, so I have children and grandchildren. My husband served in the military for 28 years. And I'm a, being a school secretary, I've seen what these kids experienced. And we talk about opting out. I've seen that happen. And accommodations can be appropriately made. When the curriculum was approved on June 19th, 2023, several board members spoke about trusting the experts amidst concern from parents. But parents certainly are knowledgeable about their children's maturity and emotional ability to cope. Please don't discount this. When the first family letter was sent out, it left out the information about violence and the mature content. I see the age of some of you people sitting here. Remember the 60s and the Vietnam War? Do you remember being told to send your children out of the room? Do you remember that? We need to keep that in mind. These children are 10. When one parent, one family decided to opt their child out, again, I'm referring back to something that was, I'm quoting from earlier in this meeting. The teacher said, "This is the curriculum." And that the student would be missing out on quality discussions with his peers and this would place him behind in his future academics. Again, the family stated that he would not continue with this and requested a different option. But then again, they were told again, "This is the text being used." Yet, according to the bylaws 202240, if a parent indicates to the school that either content or activities conflict with his or her beliefs or value system, the school will honor the parent's request to have their child excused from particular classes. Furthermore, the child will be provided alternative learning activities during this time. This particular child was only given a book at a below-grade level with no or little educational value to read for the entire time he was removed from class. There were no activities and nothing of value in this. Additionally, no family letter was sent out about the support text Kids of Kabul being read in class, which is a book rated for children 12 and over. Upon demanding to see the text, the inappropriate contact was found and asked that their son not hear the following information. Quote, "The soccer stadium was a torture chamber. Every Friday, they would force spectators into seats to watch prisoners being punished. People were beaten. They had arms cut off. Some were shot in the back of the head or had their heads cut off. Others were strung up on gallows." That's on page 81. Let me tell you something. My husband served 28 years in the United States Air Force. He saw this stuff. He does not want his children or grandchildren to hear about it, much less see it. And I'm going to give you an example of what just recently happened. My grandson happened to be in our family, in our office, in our house. He saw a picture of my husband carrying an M16. He cried because he saw that his grandpa had gone to war. Now, if that's affecting him at age 10, reading this, what do you think that's doing to these children? Please don't let that be in their curriculum. In summary, I feel that the school system has not done their due diligence in keeping the families informed appropriately, nor provided alternative material. I beg you to reconsider.
Thank you, Sandy. And we have your comments, too?
You can have it if you can read it.
We can figure it out. Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Katrina Schroeder. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks again, Board of Education, for being here and for all of your work. Two months ago, I attended a board meeting and raised a complaint that my reconsideration request for the book, The Breadwinner, had been halted with the reason that, quote, "district employees are expected to teach, given curricular materials." After that meeting, I heard from Mr. Bielang apologizing for missing my email. And a week or so later, he informed me that I could move forward with this process. I wanted to give you an update of my experience. This past Monday, I was given 15 minutes to present my concerns to a reconsideration committee. I want you to know the makeup of this committee. Out of nine total people, eight were employees of Portage Public Schools. Five of those employees are currently administrators at Portage Public Schools, including one who was heavily involved in choosing Fish Tank and one who spoke in favor of Fish Tank at the board meeting in June 2023. In addition to the five administrators, there were three teachers who were all early adopters of the Fish Tank curriculum in their respective grade level. The early adopters were people who volunteered to teach this curriculum because they believed so much in it. Many of these staff members also live in Portage and have children that go to Portage, but that doesn't minimize their clear conflict of interest and pre-existing bias in favor of the curriculum and The Breadwinner. There was only one true community member on the committee that wasn't also a PPS employee with a clear bias. In short, I don't think that the book received a fair consideration. In this meeting, I was made to look like the only person with concerns about The Breadwinner and the only one with concerns about Fish Tank in general. As you heard tonight, I am not the only one with concerns about this book and there are many, many people concerned about other units in Fish Tank, namely the new horror fiction unit being piloted by our eighth graders. I know seven parents, five of whom also teach at Portage, that are concerned about the content, bias, and educational value of the horror fiction unit. In fact, I emailed all of you about it on August 25th. Many of the concerned parents contacted leadership and were all told that we must individually meet with administrative staff. In all of those meetings, the number of staff has outnumbered the concerned parties either three to one or two to one. You see, if a parent wants to raise a concern, they first have to subject themselves to a meeting where administration seeks to change their mind about the curriculum. I have been in three such meetings now and have felt stonewalled and belittled for my opinions. Board of Education, some of you have stated in the past that we need to trust our experts. I am here to tell you that the administrators you feel are the experts have not been acting in good faith when it comes to hearing parent and teachers' concerns. I could line up seven teachers for you right now. If they felt like their conversation was truly protected, they might be willing to talk to you. Many teachers are reluctant to speak up because they have done so in the past and have had their hands slapped or have not been listened to. I use Angling Road as my example for that. The relationship between the administration and the teachers who hold a different opinion than the administration is abysmal. Teachers are afraid to speak up, fearing it will cause repercussions in their job and that they will become a target. You, the Board of Education, needs to decide whether you are going to continue to trust the Portage administrators, to trust that they are handling this in good faith, or if you are actually going to take steps to research this matter for yourselves. Please. Please be fair to parents. If you are on the side of the administration, no matter what, even after hearing about the makeup of the reconsideration committee and hearing all the others tonight, if you're truly going to still be on the administration's side, please let parents know. Just say so, so that we can stop wasting our time. Truly, parents are the experts for their own children, and they are being stonewalled and silenced by an administration that is desperate to prove that all Fish Tank units are the right choice for every child at every grade level, despite what many parents and teachers think. Thank you.
Thank you, Katrina. Do we have a copy of your remark?
Thanks for reminding me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephen Zerber. Did I get that right?
Close enough. I haven't called her.
Welcome.
You got the first name right, so I appreciate that. You did it still. Members of board, my name is Stephen Zerber, and I have three children in the PPS district. I'm here today to discuss the growing fear about the information being communicated to both the PPS board and the parent community as a whole. What is really extremely concerning is that this information is either being misrepresented or worse deceptive to hide the truth from both the board and the parents in the district. The topic of this potential issue centers around events that transpired inside the classroom, inside a meeting, as well as meetings inside this boardroom. A few weeks ago, my son came home from school concerned about the content and graphic details contained in Breadwinner. I know it's been talked about a bit, so most of this is not about that. That the fifth graders are reading in PPS. After a quick web search, we found a multitude of reviews that depicts graphic details emphasis on a higher grade level than fifth grade. We reached out to a teacher along with the principal to try to find out what exactly is going on. There was a meeting set up roughly six days later, which included the principal and the curriculum director. At that meeting, many things were discussed around the comparison of what the book, what is in the book versus what are on the online reviews. One thing that stood out from the meeting was when the director of curriculum was trying to get our son back into the classroom, which is an admirable thing, to which we shared our concern. Until we have read the book ourselves, we were not comfortable. I shared a solution of taking the book home and reading the remainder of the book with our son while editing the graphic violence to a more age-appropriate level. My response I received back was, no, I would enter in my bias, my own bias into the text. Since when is removing texts like blood flew in every direction entering my bias? When is depicting thieves' arms, my bias, depicting thieves' arms being chopped off? In June 20, June 24, 2024, in the PPS board meeting, the curriculum director stated that people wanted to know what, how they were going to deal with sensitive and controversial things and how they were handled. The response was, when something that seems to be sensitive, we added a unit that would, that has controversial, sensitive topics to it. We have a statement to the families that is very clear and very laid out on what the teacher is doing or how the framework is being used when they're discussing something with the students, like death and how it is structured. We want to be as transparent as possible so families know exactly what is, what to expect. My question to that is, where is it? Where is this letter to the families? We received nothing that would even come close to communicating the sensitive topics that were depicted above and earlier. No letter regarding graphic violence to our children would be exposed to. To summarize some of these issues that I've seen and I think we should be concerned with are, there was no letter home, no school were coming home from the children, which was also depicted in the board meeting, communicating, we would understand what the children are doing in the classroom by what they bring home. Nothing has come home in over three weeks. Books were being withheld from children to take home. How does that make any sense? Our children cannot bring the books home so we can even see what they're reading in class? Where is this transparency? When, when we first, uh, sorry. When we had this meeting with the principal and the director, we were informed that this was the first meeting and there had been no issues risen whatsoever about the book. After many discussions, we appear this is not true. It appears the book has been formally requested be reviewed, and so on and so forth. In closing, I'd like to share the information I'd learned during this investigation, is that families of kids coming into the school age that are in the Portage Public School district area are considering, maybe we should homeschool. That maybe Portage Public Schools is now teaching things that are in direct conflict with our beliefs and what we want our children to be exposed to. I don't think we want to see our Portage School District shrink. I hear all the time that we don't want to see our numbers drop. This is what I'm hearing from, from parents who have three-year-olds, four-year-olds, five-year-olds. They're now wondering, what is going on? Our fifth grader, two years ago, the state curriculum, in terms of what's required to teach them, has not changed. So why are we adding all this violence for no reason? It's just, and a comment that was made, how do, we're losing kids who want to read, right? And we're all worried about the third grade, wanting kids to read by third grade so that they have a better chance of contributing to society, or what we feel is contributing to society. Sorry about that. But, you know, if we're afraid they're losing interest in reading, we have to, in a paraphrase and probably to not make a, to grant, say a little, we have to spice it up. We have to put a little bit more into the books to get them to read. It seems like a complete shame. Thank you for your comment. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Stephen. Did you email?
I will.
Okay. Thank you. Our last speaker tonight is Timothy De Mars.
Head of staff, Al. He's not here.
Okay. Okay, that's our last speaker then? Okay. Some of your parents here tonight, most of you are, so obviously we have your contact information. Is there anyone we don't have contact information for that spoke this evening?
Mine, I, like I said, my parent, I wrote it down in the, in the.
I have your address.
Yes. Is that sufficient?
Well, it'd be great to have a phone number or email address if you don't have kids in the school, just please. Thank you all for coming this evening and sharing your concerns. We appreciate it. We're going to move on to comments by board trustees.
I had some thoughts. And this is speaking as a trustee, not as a board. Some people may like what I say, some people may not. Back August 19th, when we heard about the book, I thought, hmm, I need to read this book because I don't want to make a judgment without reading it. So I finally got it on Libby, which is the online under library loan from Portage Public Libraries. Finally got it about a week and a half ago and read it and went, hmm. Overall, it's a good book. Overall, it's a really good book. Thought provoking. There's a couple thoughts I had with it, though. These are nine, sometimes nine-year-olds in that class. Do you realize that? They take the kindergarten waiver for the fall birthdays. They may be a nine-year-old in the class. And I, I was told many years ago, one of the greatest gifts I could give my children was to preserve their innocence and their peace as long as possible. And I hold by that as much as I can with my kids because that's huge. And I, there's so many books that I love, that I would not even give my high schooler right now, is preserving their peace. They're good books, and they're ones that probably people here are like, yeah. January 20, release date, if you know what I'm talking about, you know. But that doesn't mean I'd give it to my kids because of preserving their peace. I think about October 7th, because that was so recently, a year ago, and things that I would not discuss with my, even my high schoolers about things that went on then. And that just, yeah. Second thought that I had, I love to read. I still love to read. I read things like I'm watching a movie in my head. And I was asked during an interview a few years ago, if I had one goal for my classroom, just one, what would it be? And that goal would be to have the kids leave my classroom loving reading because then the whole world is open to them. And it doesn't matter what else they learn or don't learn in my classroom because they can go to a library if they love to read. And they will learn all of that. And if our kids are loving reading by the time they graduate here, we've opened the world. And that's huge. And so what are we doing to really increase that love of reading? And is this meeting those two purposes? And this is a question that I'm asking, not a telling. This is something to consider. This isn't something where I'm like, you have to, you know, I, I might, you just think about it and ponder it. Are we encouraging the love of reading? Are we encouraging them to devour, to learn to devour books in a way that's going to continue until they're my age now? Or your age? I, you know, those are my two thoughts I had is preserving peace and loving reading. Are we doing that? Think about it. Answer it for yourself. That's what I've been pondering the last few days since I got that from Libby and the book will be returned soon, automatically, whether I want to or not. But, yeah, I've been thinking about that a lot the last, since I read the book. I don't have a firm answer, but it's been weighing heavily on my mind. Next.
As a parent of a 10-year-old who is a voracious reader, and I have not read this book, but listening to what was over there, I was almost sick. And I can't imagine if I'm feeling that way, how my child would feel to read them. And I, I might have to seriously go in 11 o'clock at night, I need your book. Give me your book. I have kids that will nonstop readers, but I can't imagine putting that in the hands of my, my, my kid greater. Needs to be sick to my stomach.
Nine-year-olds. So thank you for expressing your experience.
Yeah, Randy, I would add, appreciate members of the public being willing to come here and address us on this. That's important. Also want to thank my colleagues. I will always thank you after a retreat, some extra time dedicated and good discussion, most appreciative. And then thanks as well to the good people at Amberly and Haverhill for hosting board members last week.
Thanks, Bo. Anyone else?
I'll just say thank you for coming to speak. It's not typically our way of doing business to respond to your comments, but please be assured that we take your comments very seriously and we are listening to you.
Thanks, Carrie. Anyone else? Well, thank you for coming. I've said that several times. We really do appreciate hearing from you. And as the board understand is, understands it, this book is under review and we'll have to work that process through. But, you know, our administrators are here this evening and they've heard your comments. And again, thank you for coming and sharing. Thank you very much. I owe the board an update on the Region Six Legislative Priorities Meeting that was held. And it was for Region Six, which is nine counties. And out of nine counties, there were 18 attendees. And there was a discussion about what MASP should be working on this next year in terms of lobbying our legislature. And so the 18 attendees in our group came up with a list of things. I don't have all of them in front of me, but just a variety of things from electric buses to implementing education reforms at the highest level between the executive branch, MDE, and the legislature. And also, there was, you know, a lot of discussion because this happened right after the things that Paula described tonight about how we need a stable and reliable source of funding so we can plan. So anyway, some interesting discussion and included Jennifer from MASP who gave us the legislative update. So anyway, you asked for that report and you have it. Thank you. We'll move to our consent agenda. And we only have one item on the consent agenda this evening, and that's the approval of the minutes from the September 23rd, 2024 Regular Business Meeting. Any exceptions to the consent agenda as presented? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. And we'll now move to assurance of district performance. And our first monitoring report tonight is Monitoring Report 2.1, Treatment of Consumers. And there's a motion, please, on page 21.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education accept Monitoring Report 2.1, Treatment of Customers as a reasonable interpretation and evidence of compliance with policy.
Thank you, Bo. Is there a second? Thank you, Kim. Mark?
This, this report is presented annually to the board this month typically, and the interpretations that are in there have not changed from previous reports, so nothing to update you on in that regard. We primarily, it presents information about some of the activities that, that we participate in, that we do, some assurances of what's happening. The, the only bit of data is measuring satisfaction levels of, of parents and our students that is presented there for, for you to take a look at. Since this survey instrument was, was modified a couple of years ago, we don't have three years of consecutive trend data to, to make any conclusions, but, but what it appears is that both on the parents, as far as their satisfaction, our top two percentage has remained fairly consistent over the years, that nearly 80% of our, of our parents are, are either saying that they agree or highly agree with their experience here at Portage Public Schools. There's also a new item called the net promoter item. And, and that's, that's taking a look at those top two categories and it's, and referencing one of the questions, would they recommend this school, their school to other parents as a, as a good place to be in school? And I'm not sure exactly how that question is phrased, but, but our net promoter is, is well above 50% on that, which net promoter scores, I'd have to give you a longer explanation on that, but zero is kind of the, the median, the norm. And anything above that in the plus side is, is a good score. So we have positive, consistent numbers there for the last couple of years. And the same thing from our students. We have over, nearly 70% of our students are in that top two percentage, top box. So we're, we're happy about that. And net promoters, would they recommend their school to, to their friends? And, and again, that score has remained consistent and, and appears, at least in two years, to be going up some. So we'll, we'll be tracking that. We'll continue to track that. This, these surveys are given to, to parents, to students, and to staff in the spring of every year. So the data that you're seeing here is from the spring 2024 surveys. Yeah, there's really, the other information is, is very similar to what I've reported on in, in past years. And you happy to answer any questions if you have them?
On your charts, N equals, is that the number of people who took the survey?
Correct. Yeah, that's, that number is, you know, that's one of our goals in the district, to try to continue to see an upward trend on those. We had, when this, these surveys, we started doing these surveys probably seven or eight years ago. And, and then COVID hit, we flipped over to a pulse check survey, which was a, to give us some immediate feedback on how we were doing with our implementation, return to school plans. And then we found there was a drop off in participation at, at all levels, students, staff, and, and our parents. And a lot of that, we're, we suspect is happening across the country with other student organizations. And, you know, survey fatigue is, is one of those factors. People get surveyed a lot, almost after every experience anywhere. So I think we're experiencing some of that same thing, but we are looking at some strategies for how to increase participation. Yes, and that's a long way to answer your, N equals the number taking the survey.
It's good to see the student participation number up. And almost, almost where they were back in 2019.
Right.
That's good. That's good. That's good. That's good.
The, the parent score is back to pre-COVID levels. Students not yet, but it's getting closer.
Thank you, Mark, for that report. Are there any other questions for Mark? All those in favor of approving monitoring report 2.1, please say aye. Aye, opposed. The motion passes, the monitoring report is approved. Our next monitoring report is Executive Limitations Policy 2.5, Financial Condition and Activities. Is there a motion, please, on page 33?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education accept monitoring report 2.5, Financial Conditions and Activities as a reasonable interpretation and evidence of compliance with policy.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Emily.
This, too, is an annual report that's presented this time of the year and, and basically speaks about our, our keeping fund balance above 7%. How we handle some of the transactions internally and where we stand from a, from a financial perspective. The required actions that I have to bring to the board for approval of purchases over $100,000, those sorts of things are in this policy. I do have to make one, I, I have to give you some newer information on, on the fund balance from the previous year. That, the numbers there are not exactly the, what they should be. And this is one of those reports, the report that we talked about in the school board retreat earlier on, that if this report were, were presented in December, I wouldn't have to give you a projected, I'd have the, the audited numbers there for you. But last year, the numbers are very close to what you have here, though. But we went, we had a fund balance of approximately 14.0% or 0.4%. And then this year, with the board approved budget, you know, that fund balance is still expected to be well above 7% or around 12 and a half percent. So I'll update that and, and get it to you. But again, doing this report in December will allow me to give you post-audited numbers so that you have solid numbers and we're not going back and forth between predicted and, and assumed. That is there. And then there's a listing of the types of things that we brought back to the board that exceeded that $100,000 threshold that were mostly construction contracts at the two schools that are currently being constructed, as well as a few agreements like our school resource officers and some of the, some of the summer work that we did this, this past summer on our buildings. So happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mark? Good report. Thank you, sir. All those in favor of approving monitoring report 2.5, Financial Condition and Activities, please say aye. Aye, opposed. The motion passes and the monitoring report is approved. Our last monitoring report tonight is Executive Limitations Policies 2.8, Conflict of Interest. There's a motion, please, on page 44.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education accept monitoring report 2.8, Conflict of Interest, as a reasonable interpretation and evidence of compliance with policy.
Thank you, Kimberly. Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Terry.
This, too, is an annual report that's presented in, in October and basically covers any conflict of interest that would exist in, in the district, as well as the reference to the policies that do, that do cover that, that we have in operational policies. So I disclosed the one that I discovered that existed, you know, with, with a family member who works for a vendor who we happen to purchase materials from, which was a relationship that started well after we had already embarked on using that project, on that, that product. So that's, that's it for that report.
Any conflict of interest here, Mark? Thank you very much. Any questions for Mark? All those in favor of approving monitoring report 2.8, Conflict of Interest, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Monitoring report is approved. And we'll now move to our first action item, which is new teacher appointments. There's a motion, please, on page 50.
President, many answer, if I move that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following teacher for Portage Public Schools, Milo Fowler as an ELA teacher at North Middle School.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
If Brad were here, he would, he would say that it's his recommendation that we approve hiring that teacher, that I think we are teaching hires are almost over. I believe we have one that we might still be interviewing for right now at one of our middle schools. But this Milo has been working at Portage Public Schools as a building sub for the last couple of years and has a bachelor's degree with a minor in English from San Diego Christian College. And we're happy to recommend him for that position.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions? All those in favor of approving the new teacher appointment, please say aye. Aye, opposed. The motion passes and we welcome Milo there. Our next item is a discussion item, the demolition of Central Elementary and Woodland Elementary.
Johnny will review that for you.
Thanks again. This is just a follow-up to our initial note around demolition of the current Central and Woodland Elementary School. It's my recommendation that the board include the parts of abatement and demolition services for Central L and Woodland Elementary from Asbestos Abatement, Inc., in the amount of The funds for the demolition will come from 2021 bond funds. In short, we actually need to demo both Central L and Woodland. Central L's demolition is the highest priority because that's where the new parking lot will be, followed by Woodland. I went through our normal procedures for posting this project out to vendors. Asbestos Abatement, Inc. was our lowest bid and also our lowest qualifying bid. We've worked with our owner's rep, Plant Moran, as well as BDN Industrial Hygiene Consultants. This is a consulting firm that helps us with the abatement side of things. And that's why they are introduced to this project. We've also attached a recommendation from both Plant Moran and BDN. And then we've also listed the, the bid tab for the four companies that put in bids for this here. This is an aggressive timeline of roughly 20 days per school. In a post-bid interview, we did get reasonable assurance from the vendor of they provide this off. This is not 20 days overlapping each other. These would run adjacent to each other, with Central L being first, Woodland second. I'll be happy to answer any questions from the board about this demolition and abatement for the summer of 2025.
And Johnny, just to be clear, the, the vendor is Asbestos Abatement, Inc., that they will take care of the asbestos and they will do the whole demo.
Correct.
So this is all.
All in one, and that sum is inclusive of all schools combined. When we put out the RFP, we asked for vendors to give us a, a price for Central L exclusively, Woodland exclusively, and a combined number, so that we can try to see which would be our best opportunity to save money. And based on the, the bid tabs, AAI, as they sometimes call themselves, definitely gave us the most aggressive price.
I have an odd question to which I don't know if you, what happens to all the stuff inside the schools?
This, this, no, that's, that's a good question. So we will take out things that we consider to be valuable. So we'll work with Ryan and the tech team. They'll take out some pieces related to technology. Susan in Food Service has a couple items within the Food Service Department that she'll take out. There's some newer furniture that we've purchased in pilot that we will take out. But the rest, the vendor is responsible for recycling and scrap. So essentially what oftentimes happened, a, a vendor will put in an aggressive price because they can possibly reuse or salvage some of the material inside the school.
I've seen some, a lot of school staff show up at like Bitter G, so I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we didn't have anything that was worth going through an auction. Essentially, by allowing the things to stay in it, sometimes you get more aggressive pricing. And I think that was evident here with our low bid here. And these numbers came within the budget that was forecasted for both buildings.
Excellent.
Johnny, right now, we're not set to approve this until November. I know this is a big project and you've got a tight time. Would it, you have any advantage for us to approve it this evening?
You know, if the board so desires, we could definitely, we'd be happy to take forward the, the recommendation to get the ball rolling with the, with the vendor. But at the same time, we did explain to the vendor that, you know, November would be the central timeline for approval. They also said they, they could have it. So is that the board's pleasure that we, we move forward or not?
Are you okay with moving forward on this and everything's in order and they've got a tight timeline? So let's not add to it.
I move that we move this to an action item.
Second. All those in favor of moving the demolition to an action item? Aye. Aye. Okay, very good. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of abatement and demolition services for Central Elementary and Woodland, Asbestos Abatement, Inc., in the amount of $968,900. The funds for the demolition will come from the 2021 bond fund.
Thank you very much, Beau. Is there a second? Thank you, Keith. All those in favor of approving the demolition of Central and Woodland Elementary, say aye. Aye, opposed? The motion passes. The last item on our agenda is a discussion item. It's those things to be voted on at the MASP Delegate Assembly on the 24th. Mark's not access to this in the board packet, and I didn't know if anyone had any questions about anything that's going to be done at the Delegate Assembly. It doesn't appear to be anything of consequence. There's continuing resolutions, which are a carryover from last year. And anyone at this meeting can move to amend one of those continuing resolutions. And then there's also some amended resolutions that are proposed by the MASP Resolutions and Bylaw Committee. And then there's new and substituted resolutions. This, this one this year is, there's nothing in MASP resolutions about suicide prevention, so they have added that resolution because suicide is the second leading cause of death for students. And finally, there's some minor bylaw changes that allows the ex-president of the MASP Board of Directors to serve on the board. Any questions? Anything? Anybody? Okay, I like the way you shake your head. All those in favor, please. We are adjourned. Thank you. I don't know, Terry.